Okay, welcome everybody to our town Deepwater council meeting for May the 4th, 2021. I guess we'll move forward with the first thing, the approval of the agenda. Everybody's had a chance to review that. And I guess, oh, before I do that, I should say, sorry, I should say we do have three council members zooming in today. So we have Council Ado, Council Coste, Council Panlo. I think you can see them on the NACTV camera there, but yeah, due to COVID restrictions is one of the reasons going on. We decided to shrink our council a little bit, but we're all here, just not in a chair. Okay, so yes, sorry, can we go forward with the approval of the agenda? By Deputy Mayor Hedley, and second by Councilman. Be resolved, the council of Town Deepwater do not approve the regular meeting agenda from May 4th, 2021. All in favor? Eric? I think we are now going to just go ahead and move into our public hearing. So I need a motion for that move forward on that public hearing for Adri Enson. So move by Councilman Parrot. Second by Councilman Ado. Attorney Judge Jason?
Yes.
Be resolved, the council of Town Deepwater do not approve this public hearing. Your representation variation application be that 04-2021 of Jolene Adri Enson. All in favor? Vote, carry. Okay, Jeff, you can tell us what to talk about.
Sure, so this is application B 04-2021-N. Owner and applicant is Jolene Adri Enson. The proposal is a variation requiring to increase the maximum height of fence in the side and rear yards from six feet above average joint ground to eight feet above average joint ground. It's affecting 25 Hillcrest Drive, being block 23, Plan 49589. Reason in support is applicant's yard is elevated, higher than neighboring properties, and the applicant wishes to construct a six-foot high fence on top of the existing retaining wall.
Retaining walls, listen. Okay. Notice, yeah. Jolene, you're here, did you want to speak to this?
All I have to say is that I was approached by Jeff last year that it would be my best interest to put in these retaining walls, and I have done so. And yeah, I just like to put a fence on top of my retaining walls that surround my property. And I have hopefully six of them. And I understand that there's varying height differences between the properties, so that's why I'm here.
Okay, so maybe could you, or could Jeff explain to us or to me, why that law is higher than the rest around?
There is quite a substantial slope in my backyard. It was a new build when I moved in. And in the last few years, we graded it, so it's more of an even ground. And because of this, there was still a bit of runoff with rain and just washout going into my neighbor's property. So this is why we decided the retaining wall was best to hold my property back in so that it wasn't going onto the neighbor's property.
So, yeah, she's correct, and at the time, I'm not familiar with who, how the landscaping done, but there was some issues, and at the time, I guess it was really discussed, either remove the work that was done or construct the walls to alleviate any of the drainage issues, which is the route she chose. So it was a drainage just for her or for the neighbors too?
Well, the whole area was running right through several backyards, meeting to, I don't remember which street, this on the north side of that, so.
Okay.
So I'm not sure if I approved, did the grading, it was just...
Jolene, you can come sit up here if you want, if you want to be closer.
It doesn't matter.
Want to stay away?
I chose to do the retaining wall only because I have retaining walls on the north and south sides of my property, and they're very narrow, so it was almost impossible to get some sort of equipment in there to remove some of the dirt from my backyard, if that makes sense.
Okay. So this fence you're building, will it be a consistent height all the way around then?
I would prefer that to be the case, yes.
So you're actually going to build it on top of the retaining wall?
Yes.
And you want to add six feet to it, is that correct? So you want an eight-foot wall, and that would be eight feet clean all the way around. It would be nine to one point five at another, it'll be?
No, that's, the fence constructed would be, the average height would change based off of the perimeter around. In some areas, the retaining wall is below, and then it needs...
Yeah, so you tier the fence, yeah.
But when you look at the fence at the top of the wall?
In her yard?
Yes.
That's correct. But if you were standing in other yards, so if you were standing in, say, the south yard, the fence would probably be lower, because the neighbor to yours, south, the elevation is higher. So that neighbor would see approximately, I don't know the exact numbers, maybe a five-foot fence. I'm just guessing, because it would be six feet in her yard. As heads around to the west boundary, there's a taller retaining wall, because the ground slopes again to that west. So that neighbor would probably see a six-foot fence plus the, I believe it ranges from two feet to a five-foot retaining wall. So they would be affected the greatest. And then when you get to the north boundary, the elevation there was approximately two feet, so they would see a six, eight-foot high wall. A six-foot wood wall plus the retaining wall. So their portion, when they stand at the top of the fence, would be approximately eight feet.
But from the inside, it would always be six feet or less?
In her property, it would be six feet.
So she would never be using a board that was longer than six feet?
Correct.
Yes. So this has been circulated to the neighboring properties. I received three responses, one, I don't have the address. They actually phoned just to clarify what the request was, and they had no concern, and this would have been one of the properties to the south?
West.
Southwest, correct. And you have, this is from 27 Hillcrest, his name is Christopher. This would be the property directly to the north. And it was, I'm okay with Jolene putting up the fence. I talked with her and we agreed into something, thank you. And I also received another one from Bruce Phipps, and that is at, I don't think I put the address down. It would be 20 Manawaka, which would be the property to the northeast of hers, off corner to corner. And so he noted that as a backdoor neighbor, I would like to know that they're planning to erect a six-foot fence along the back lane, and I see an eight-foot variation along the sides. I will assume my wife and I do not have, or he's assuming on the height, my wife and I do not have a concern with having to look at a six-foot fence on top of almost a five-foot wall. Sorry, I might have to rephrase that one. My wife and I do have a concern of having to look at a six-foot fence on top of an almost five-foot wall already that they built. Seems to me they put the cart before the horse with this variance, as we don't support any of those six, eight feet on top of this concrete wall, and also eight feet on the sides. I would think it would be one big ugly mess to look at for years to come. Final words, do you not support this? I can't see a four-foot fence with some decorative maskets. I did respond just to clarify the uncertainty of the heights, the height difference, just so that they were fully clear of what the height was, and they did respond, and that they understood now the height, but they still wish to have it addressed as well. That's the only notice I've been receiving.
Any questions from council? Is anybody out there on Zoom?
Well, just to clarify, so there was water drainage issues with your neighbors, so you took it upon yourself to solve the water drainage issues, and the solutions to the water drainage issues ended up with the retained wall, you're building a fence on your property, and it's no higher than six feet on your property?
Correct.
Anybody else?
Well, it's a difficult area with so much slopes in that, yeah, there's a lot of challenges with water in that area. Certainly this did alleviate a certain amount of, I don't know if it alleviated all the problems, Jeff, with water drainage, or I'm sure it alleviated quite a bit.
I had no concerns since, I will say that, so if there has been a problem, it hasn't been addressed, but... So yeah, it might have been, well, obviously tiered yards, and in such a manner where slopes or controlled water is always a positive thing, in my opinion, so.
Okay, anybody else?
So, Jason? So just to be clear, so are we looking at putting a six-and-a-half-foot fence on top of a five-foot retaining wall, or is it a total combined height of eight feet?
The height would vary depending on what side of what property you own. It would vary from probably five feet to maybe, at the highest point, about 10 to 12 feet at the highest point, depending on which yard you're standing in.
So just take that one up the back, Jeff, where that gentleman was talking about the five-foot retaining wall. So what would go on top of that?
That would be six feet. So that would be the property to the west, and they right now, they're looking at a retaining wall that's anywhere from two to five feet, because the ground was sloping in one direction. So obviously, the wall was constructed level. So when you're on the south side of retaining wall, looking at it, it looks two-feet-ish. When you're on the north side, it's five-feet-ish. So that would be that, plus a six-foot fence on top. So on that wall, it would vary from about eight-foot high to 12-foot high, depending on which side of the fence it is, yes.
Councilman Parrot?
So that area where the retaining wall is five feet, we have bylaws and code that says if you have a drop-off of X feet, you must have a safety fence. So there has to be a fence of some kind to protect somebody falling over the edge of that retaining wall.
Well, that, yes, that's definitely, that's not necessarily a code or a bylaw, as it's landscaping. So I mean, that's what a property owner does to protect themselves from liability, you'd be correct.
But if it was a deck on their house?
If it was a deck, correct, anything within it dwelling, but out in the yard, there's no specific requirements for real. But it's definitely lies on a property owner's perspective to protect anybody within their property, right?
Okay, anybody else? Okay, and I guess we'll go forward, and we will adjourn this public hearing. Oh, move by, Councilman Parrot. Second by Deputy Mayor Hedley. Be resolved, the council of Town Deepwater do not adjourn the public hearing at 7:15 PM. All in favor? Okay, we'll go back into our regular meeting. The next one is the approval of minutes. Everybody's had a chance to review that, all the public hearings. Everybody's comfortable with that? Can I add something before with the motion?
Carry on.
Okay, Council Panlo, moved by Council Panlo, seconded by Deputy Mayor Hedley. Be resolved, approve the minutes of the regular meeting and three public hearings held April 20, 2021, and the minutes of the special meeting held April 27, 2021, as directed. All in favor? Vote, carry. Okay, we are into council reports. Does anybody have a council report tonight? Councilman Parrot?
So, John Nelson, Arnie Suski, myself, from the Newquay Medical Clinic Committee, renegotiated a 10-year lease with the doctors group at the Mountain Avenue Medical, yeah, Mountain Avenue Medical Clinic, Newquay Medical Clinic. So we did that today, and so once I print it out, we'll have it all signed up, protecting the revenue stream and the doctors for another 10 years.
Okay, good deal. Anybody else have a council report? What are you on Zoom? Okay, all right, moving forward, the need, matters of operations.
Thank you, Mr. Parrot. As of yesterday, we've had summer staff start, so we have a good group start. They'll be trickling in for the next couple weeks. I think we've got some out of the province and some out of across the border that are doing still their quarantine period. And we do have our high school students who want to complete. Oh, May 3rd as well, we started our yard waste compost pickup program. So that's a full swing now, entire month of May. Staff are finally getting somewhere with some utility clearances, and they have to do some of the renewals that have been scheduled around town. Been a slow process to get all of the utility to place. And I also posted yesterday, the campground is open for registration, and the campground is open. We still have to turn the water on, there's still a way for that consistent winter evening freeze to stop for us, but things seem to be turning around, so we're hopeful we can get that water turned on shortly. And then street sweeping is still ongoing, it was a penny, but I think they've got a good chunk of community in that now.
So do we know how many students we've hired this year, or... Box online, or I guess they're still trickling in, but...
We'll have 16 in total once everybody's in.
Okay, okay. Good. Jeff, Councilman Parrot?
Question, do you have the service connections done up for the seven housing units going in?
Yes, all those connections were all completed, ready to walk, so. And that line is now charged, and test results came back, so it's possible water.
Yeah, Councilman Drard? Just in reverse, the campground, you hear so much about shortage of camping capacity in the province. How is people shaking out so far, the bookings? I know that it's a lot of people count on that campground for swim lessons and whatnot, so.
I believe we had frenzied calls come in, and we'd asked the public to be patient, as we have one person answering the phone and running our program. They've also been trying to fill out the voicemail, so when no one answers and the voicemail kicks you out, there's a reason why, so just hang on and try again later. We'll get to all pages in time. I do believe they have caught up now, Jolene, you say? So we have our initial story, and it kind of settles down.
And we're quite full.
It's quite full for the season, so it's going to be limited capacity, or are there being due this season?
Yeah, we still have scheduled repairs for the north end to be completed. The floodworks, some silt, and then some electrical components have an order, so we know those to come in.
In regards to facilities there, bathroom, showers, how is that going to be affected under COVID rules?
Same as last year, so the campground washroom will be open, limited status. I think they'll have to wait their turn. I think we have a program in place last year, so it was one individual there at a time. Our public washroom at the park, I believe, will be open, but we'll remain keeping the flats closed at this point. And then we still have the fancy outcomes, so we're precasting this. Want to see those a bit opened up, too.
So the ones that are, like, are in the park lane?
Yeah, it's a lot easier now that we'll have summer staff there, that we can do sanitation, these ones in being now, or if we didn't have any of that happening, so.
Great. Our river, I was going to say park pit, I was going to say park pit, but I don't think I want to be. Anybody else got questions for the need? Okay, thank you. All right, we shall move on to correspondence. The Manitowoc Watership Districts Program is calling.
Nothing really to report, other than this is a summary of 2019, 20 operations for all the watershed districts in Manitowoc. Just sharing it with everybody.
Okay, we are moving forward into finance. So we're looking at accounts for April 2021, everybody's had a chance to review them. I have a motion to move forward on that. Moved by Councilman Parrot. Seconded by Councilman Ado. Be resolved, I reapproved the accounts for April 2021, totaling $411,653.04 as reviewed and representing check 202100492 to 202100667, but excluding 202100561 and 2021100604. All in favor? Okay, we have Councilman Drard, and Mayor Hedley, excuse themselves, conflict. We're moving forward on the paying of the bills for home hardware and quad. Can I get one more time on that? Councilman Parrot, moved by Councilman Parrot. Seconded by Councilman Coste Check. Be resolved, I reapproved check number 2021100561 and 202100604 for April 2021 to home hardware and Newquay Glasson Quad, totaling $4,093.88. All in favor? Okay, we're moving to new business. We're looking at the subdivision of Forside Real Estate Limited, calling.
So this is file number 4437-21-8264, proposal to subdivide part of Southeast 331415, or Plan 63062, lots A to H, otherwise registered to Forside Real Estate. So looking at the report, council came back after circulation process. Land is located in Town Deepwater, there is one large building on the property to be subdivided. So for just the knowledge of the viewers, this would be the building that remains standing after Murray's garage, whose no longer exists on Mountain Avenue. So current use of the building that is situated on the property is preparing tricons. And the intent is to sever off that parcel, creating one new lot for that existing commercial use, and consolidating the remainder of all of the balance of the residual property to the property to the east. Under the development plan for the Newquay Area Planning District, the subject property is designated CBD commercial area according to the planning district development plan bylaw, and the policies are supportive of this type of development. Under the zoning bylaws, subject property is classified as CC Central Commercial Zone according to the zoning bylaw. The comments that came out of the circulation process, land titles, or also known as terranet, two commony lines and minerals, a three-parcel plan survey is required. Certificate approval is to give instructions on how the parcels are to be issued, and mortgage would need to be amended or discharged. Newquay Area Planning District, the development agreement should be entered into the formal basis for both commercial and residential uses on the property. The agreement should take into consideration shared access, usage approach, and parking area, any loading or unloading requirements and services such as garbage collection. Such development agreement should be registered on all effective titles by the property owner at their cost, and the property to the planning board. MTS and other agencies have no concerns or comments. There were no land use planning issues identified, and approval of subdivision will be subject to provincial requirements, as noted, and any conditions of council that might come forward. Just very quickly, in looking at this particular file, it previously come forward for the allowance of a conditional use for the creation of 36-unit multi-residential facility on the eastern part of that particular property. Variances were required to vary the property boundaries, but also to take into account the allowance for parking provisions for not only that particular unit, but for the commercial space, would have spoke to 43 parking stalls, three of which would be assigned to the commercial use. At that time, council passed the resolution, and the condition required that all of those common things be addressed in a development agreement. Now that this has actually come forward for now a subdivision to sever that parcel, I have actually put in the resolution to approve alterations to suggest that we would be satisfying both accounts of the conditional use and variation application, as well as this subdivision by simply having a declaration of easement that would cover the access to the property and the use of the parking stalls. Insofar as garbage and collection of those types of things, and recycling, we actually have a process in place here in the office whereby each title would get their own set of garbage disposal bins, so there would be no requirement for sharing there, so those would be accommodated that way. So if you're willing to approve this based on having a shared access declaration of easement for the common areas that register on title, then, in speaking as well with the planning office, Jeff Bronn, that we think we can satisfy both of us.
Any questions, any comments? Okay, if not, we'll move forward with the resolution, move by. Councilman Drard? Seconded by Deputy Mayor Hedley. Whereas the property currently under subdivision, application 4437-21-8264, was previously granted at conditional use with required variances on March 2nd, 2021, under application CU-B-01-2021. And whereas, the approval was subject to Forside Real Estate Limited, as owner of the property, to enter into a development agreement to protect matters of common interest to both the residential and commercial uses of the property. And whereas, since approving conditional use variation application CU-B-2021 Forside Real Estate is proceeding with the subdivision of that portion of the property, containing the existing commercial use and consolidation of the remainder of the residual with the property to the east. Therefore, be it resolved, in consideration of requirements set out March 2nd, 2021, following the conditional use and variation hearing council, hereby approve subdivision application 4437-21-8264. Forside Real Estate Limited, to subdivide lots A to H, Plan 63062, in Southeast 331415 West, subject to the establishment of either a shared access agreement or declaration of easement to be registered on the title and covering shared access use approach and proportionate share of the parking area. Further, be resolved, that the development agreement referenced in the approval of application CU-B-01-2021 be deemed to be satisfied once the condition imposed as part of approving this subdivision is complete. All in favor? Opposed? Okay, we are moving on to the second and third meetings of the bylaw, levy taxes for 2021. Anybody have anything they want to say before we move forward on that? Okay, we're going to move forward with the second reading then, move by.
Carry.
Councilman Panlo, seconded by Councilman Drard. Be resolved, the bylaw number 3206-21, being a bylaw of Town Deepwater, to levy taxes for the year 2021, to provide for a due tax due date, and to provide the late payment penalty, be now read for a second time. All in favor? Vote, carry. Okay, we're going to move forward for a third time, which is a recorded vote. Again, move by. Councilman Parrot. Seconded by Deputy Mayor Hedley. Be resolved, bylaw number 3206-21, being a bylaw of Town Deepwater, levy taxes for the year 2021, to provide a tax due date and to provide the late payment penalties, be now read for a third time, and passed. All in favor? Opposed? Have votes in our... Okay, we have a pretty quick meeting tonight. I don't know if there's any other business anybody wants to discuss or talk about? No, nothing? Okay. I guess I just want to thank our three councillors for zooming in, and I know it's an interesting time right now, where we thought we were getting close, and those vaccines are getting here, but it's just taking a little bit longer than we thought. Hang on. If there's nothing else, we will move forward with adjourned the meeting, so move by.
Carry.
Councilman Panlo, seconded by...
Raymond.
Councilman Coste. Be resolved, the council of Town Deepwater do not adjourn this regular meeting council at 7:30 PM. All in favor? Okay, so we just lost track of our public hearing, sorry. So we're just going to go ahead and reopen our meeting, so move by. Councilman Drard, and seconded by Councilman Parrot. All in favor? Vote, carry. Okay, so we're going to move forward with discussion on the public hearing on the fence over at Hillcrest. So, what's everybody thinking?
My thought is, the owner of the property is building a six-foot fence on their property. It's a safety issue which is being rectified. They finished a drainage issue, a fixed drainage issue. So there's a lot of positives to this. I can't see the fence going up with other than new materials, so it won't be an awful-looking structure. And the part that I like the most is that their longest board being used to be vertical is a six-foot fence for, so...
Okay, I guess I'm still having a tough time visualizing it. Like, I just, I can't, yeah, because the way it was discussed, I wasn't quite sure that the back rack's going to have an 11-foot fence.
You're going to be six feet to ground, whether the ground has the first wall.
Yeah, as if someone's standing on the other side, it would be a little bit...
It'll be looking 11 feet to top of that structure.
Inside, six feet, outside... Inside six feet, outside.
Right.
Because if I, if I looked at my own property, certainly my property is level and then drops coming to the back. And if there had been, you know, made major concerns, cause that is a very difficult area for water drainage and that. And, and so if I had taken the initiative to put all that investment in, to raise up that property, that's, that's a, there's a fair amount of money you could put into something like that. So once you build a new house, you have, uh, you know, you put significant money into landscape. I think I would want to sit in my backyard and see a even fence, a six-foot fence around the property. And I think in this case, I, you know, I understand it affects line of sight for people, but, um, but still, it has fixed numerous other items within, uh, within the property, so.
So you're saying you'd be in favor?
I would be in favor.
Okay. And Counsel Barrett, that's what we said too. Anybody, um, Zoom that wants to talk about it? Counsel Madoff?
Yeah, you know, uh, definitely, uh, in support, but with a compromise, I would suggest, because I don't think it's fair for the other neighbors to have to look at a twelve-foot wall. Once it's combined, you know, five feet or so and then another six and a half feet. That's what it was saying in the application. That's a pretty big wall. I think, I think there's room for a compromise, though maybe the total height from the neighbor's side would be no greater than seven feet combined. Now, whatever the owner wants to look at, that's up to the owner, but we shouldn't make resident, other residents have to stare at a twelve-foot wall.
Okay, I guess the issue I see with that is you'd be seeing six feet on your sides and then like, say, three feet on the back door, right? If you were to start playing around with your fence line, right? Yeah, that would, you, you'd almost have to physically see the property to, to understand the, the difference in the elevations of the yards. Um, right, a- as it sits, um, without any request for variation, like she, she could build a four-foot high fence on top of that right now with, with no questions asked. Um, just, just based off of the varying, I, I did not, I'm sorry. I didn't, I didn't average the ground and, and a four-foot high fence on top of that would have, would have met minimum requirements without any further requests. So, uh, i- if it happened to get rejected, she, she could go and produce a, a four-foot fence high right now on top of what's existing there, so. Okay.
Which is not a privacy fence.
I have a question here, or I'm just wondering, would it be possible for us to, uh, actually have a chance to go out and take a look at the property? I know, I appreciate seeing the pictures, that would certainly helpful. But I'm just wondering with the definite variations in, in levels, if it would be possible to actually go take a look at it?
Yeah, no, it's a possibility that, yeah, we could take the opportunity to go there. What does, what does everybody think? Counsel Gerard, yeah?
That, that five-foot retaining wall, it's not five feet consistent, right? It's a, it's a declining cell.
Correct, yeah.
So it would be eleven feet to.
Eleven feet to.
We did that, uh, probably.
Eighteen. Eleven feet to eighteen total.
That would be, that would be the worst side there. Uh, I shouldn't say worst, the maximum side.
Good. My, my concern for the neighbor who bases the eleven-foot side is the maintenance on their side of the fence once it's eleven feet. That's my, like, that's my concern, is then that person who's zooming at that eleven-foot structure, they want to paint that fence, right? I mean, it, when it's new, it's new, but years going forward, that, that's my concern. I, I can appreciate the six feet from ground. I, I don't have a problem with that. It's, of the neighbors for maintenance after, but the neighbors are maintaining, maintaining the retaining wall too.
But if it's, if that fence is on their own property, nobody else can paint it.
So is she gonna paint it?
Well, that's a, that'd be the homeowner.
Okay, so I'm hearing maybe we should table this for this meeting.
Uh, we still.
Yeah.
We would have to see. So the next, for COVID rules, isn't it, some of those properties?
Yeah, I thought about that too. Uh, yeah.
Under public health orders, as long as you conduct a municipal business, it's not considered a gathering, but then you have to make sure you follow your policy in the business.
Okay, so if I understand this correctly, with the motion, we're still going to the minutes because that's, so it was part of the public hearing, but we are tabling that motion until the next meeting and then we'll figure out the time of maybe some of this. Everybody comfortable with that?
Not given a moment of time for the table?
Oh, yeah, okay, so I need a motion to move that, so move by.
Yeah.
Yeah, Counsel Costincheck, seconded by.
Garrett?
Counsel Padlo. All in favor? Opposed? Barrett.
Can we give another adjournment?
Okay, so I guess I need to do one more adjournment, so.
I wonder if we'll do that.
Yeah, that's right. So we're now gonna move to adjourn our meeting at seven forty P.M. So move by.
Garrett?
Counsel Padlo, seconded by. Counsel, Counsel Costincheck, all in favor? Barrett. Okay, thank you guys, sorry.